There ain't no rules.
Sometimes you have...
I'm not done with her. Wait. After the election, I'm bringing that up. I'm bringing her comments.
I don't care.
Be on all at once.
Yeah, she just stayed one second, she said.
Yeah, all set. What happens sometimes is front door gets pushed by accident and your Wi-Fi goes off, right?
Good to know that.
The little tower has to be in there.
Welcome, everybody. Today is November 1st, 2016. It is 7:04, and I will lead everyone in prayer. Dear Lord, we ask that you please watch over this great nation and this great state of Rhode Island, and in particular, the great town of West Wallack and the citizens here in West Wallack. We ask that you please help guide this council in making wise decisions, informed decisions, and always with a little bit of compassion. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Okay. Roll call.
Councilman Tucker?
Here.
Councilman Kenahan?
Here.
Councilman Padula?
Here.
Council Vice President Giroux?
Here.
Council President Goslin, absent. There is a quorum. Minutes of the previous meeting. Resolved minutes of the October 18th, 2016 Town Council meeting are hereby accepted.
I'll move the resolution. Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Ayes, ayes.
Consent agendas, license applications resolved. If the consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed of or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
I'll move the resolution.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Discussion from the audience?
No.
Having none. Moved and seconded.
We don't need to do a roll call, Mr. Jordan.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Ayes, ayes.
Do you want to read them off?
121.
That's fine.
There's a lot of them.
I don't mind reading it.
There's just one I have a question on over there. Is it...
All right. Well, we just approved the raffle permit for the Friends of West Wallack Public Library. Peter and Paul Church, renewals for September business license for Seth D'Arubio, DBA D'Arubio's Barber Shop, for Paul Feria, DBA Feria and Sun Landscaping, renewal for October business license for ESA Portfolio Operating LLC, doing business as Extended Stay America, and new business licenses for Wayne E. Simis, DBA Wayne's Automotive Repair and Services. Also, new business license for Christina Pimental, DBA TT's Street. And craft show permit for Daring Middle School, and that's on November... A little plug. That's on November 5th this week, at 8 o'clock to 4:00. That's it? Okay.
Additions and cancellations resolved. If the attached additions in the amount of $114.14 and cancellations in the amount of $12,270.28 presented to the tax assessor for approval of the Town Council in accordance with Article 25, Section 5 of the West Wallack Code of Ordinances is hereby approved. The original is on file in the Office of the Tax Assessor.
I'll move the resolution.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion from the council or from the audience?
Yeah, I just got one question.
Angelo?
Let me see. Let me find it. I want to see what this means. Update card appeal. What is... Christine, what is that? Is that that they went before the board and the card or something was wrong in their file?
Good evening. What that means is that somebody came in, they said, "Could you please take a look at the card? Something's off." And so then we go out and do an inspection. If the card is corrected and they're satisfied, then it doesn't go to tax board review and the change is put into the camera system.
Oh, I see. Because I never seen that on there before. Card appeal. I said...
Yeah. I can go back if you want me to use the same abbreviations that the previous assessor used.
No, no, that's fine. I just wanted to know what it was, that's all.
Yeah.
All right, that's all.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Christine. Any other discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Ayes, ayes.
Extended hours resolved. The Town Council hereby accepts the extended hour to Boneheads Inc., DBA Boneheads Wing Bar on November 5th, 2016, from 8:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. for a televised UFC event. And I believe that the gentleman is here to speak. He called me that. He wants it amended.
He wants to amend it?
Wait a minute.
I'll move the resolution for discussion.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Good evening. I actually have to...
Discussion?
I actually have to ask for an amendment. It's actually the 12th, not the 5th. I tried to call and change it. I just had it wrong in my calendar, but it's actually the 12th that we're looking for.
Let's get an amendment.
Yeah, I'll make...
Yeah, let's make an amendment.
I'll make an amendment that the date... Change the date from the 5th to the 12th.
Second.
Moving and seconded. For the amendment only. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry. I need a... For the amendment, I need a roll call vote. Angelo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so that's on the amendment.
Now I'll move the resolution for discussion.
Second.
Moving and seconded. All those...
Do you have anything else to say?
Yeah, we're not looking to extend our liquor license hours. We'd have no problem pulling all drinks at 1:00. We're just looking to be open till 2:00. Just the event, they normally end by 1:00. This is a big event, and the UFC announced that it was going to be extended to 2:00 a.m. And the last thing we want to do is kick everybody out before the main event.
Sure. Sounds good. Let me just ask the chief though. Chief Silva, you here?
Yeah.
Could you come up just to make sure that chief has no objections on this? Congratulations, by the way, chief.
Oh, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, my understanding is they're just going to be... The business is going to be open and they're not going to be serving. So, I mean, if the council is fine with that, we don't have an issue with it as long as, you know, they follow the parameters of the extension.
They stop serving at 1:00.
We'll stop serving before then. There'll be no drinks on the tables as of 1:00.
So you have normal last call time?
Yes.
I would assume around 12:30.
Exactly.
Good. Thanks, chief.
Okay, you're welcome.
Any other questions from the council?
Yeah, well, I mean, if I'm in there and I order around that quarter of 1:00 and I'm... I don't want to swallow my beer. I mean, I'm not going to say anything if he's got it there at 1:30 in the morning, as long as he's not serving after 1:00. I have no problem with the drinks being...
I think he's going to remain... He's doing status quo. He's just not going to... He's not going to extend alcohol.
You're right. But, I mean, just because, you know, you're closing... You close the bar. If I got a beer and Fred's got a mixed drink and we're sitting there, and, oh, you're going to get rid of it before 1:00. I mean, that's ludicrous.
You're just going to status quo your alcohol license. You're not going to serve anything after 1:00.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So they can have the drinks on the table. I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, as long as the...
Yeah.
As long as the chief doesn't. That's fine, too.
Chief, you understand what we're saying, right? I mean, I don't want anybody guzzling down their drinks because it's 1:00 and they can't have it. I mean...
Let's listen to what the chief is saying.
They're open till 2:00.
It's coming up here with a very serious look on us.
Well, I mean, obviously, it's up to the council. But, I mean, if you're going to keep the liquor license the way it should be, I mean, I don't know that come 2:00 in the morning, there should be still be beers on the counter.
Normally, you wouldn't have that.
Because they wouldn't be there.
Yeah, he's already said that. I mean, you know, Councilman Padula is fine with it, but you're not going to do it anyway.
No.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Good. Thanks, chief.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. So, any other questions or comments from the audience? No? Gentlemen? You all set? Okay, let's... Yeah, we need a roll call vote. Okay, roll call vote on extending the hours for Boneheads on November 12th from 8:00 to 2:00 a.m. Angelo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So you pass. Very good. Have a good time. Sounds like fun.
Good luck. No wrestling on the tables.
Surplus equipment sale resolved per recommendation from the Finance Director. The Town Council hereby approves.
I'm going to recuse myself.
The following awards to A&amp;A Auto Parts, $1,658.24. Breeler Inc., $401.00. Halls Garage, $7,730. Gonzalez, $250.00.
All right. Let the record show, Mary Ann, that Councilman Angelo Padula has recused himself from this because he's bid on it.
My company bid on it, right.
Which is your right. Yeah, very good.
Should I finish reading it, or that's enough?
Somebody's got to move the resolution.
Yeah, I think that's enough. Look at the...
Move the resolution second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion from the audience on this?
Just for the record, the recommendation is actually coming from DPW, not from me as the Finance Director.
Okay, so the recommendations are coming from DPW, not from the Finance Director.
Which is normally the case from the departments when it comes to...
Yeah, no, it's on you. Okay.
Hi, Dave.
Yeah, as it says in the cover letter, everything was advertised as required, proper amount of time, bids were sealed. We opened them, and we received five bids total, I think it was, and four people got awards. So...
And let's make it perfectly clear, because, you know, people are going to go like this, "Oh, Angelo bid on... Perfectly legal, nothing wrong with that."
He has arms length. He has every right in the world to... His company has every right in the world to bid on this.
Yeah. He bid, but he didn't win any anyway, so...
I just put it in so people can play.
I'm sorry. I thought you got one.
No. I won't ball it off.
Yeah, you did.
I just want the company name in there. I didn't want it for nothing. I think my mother bid on him. I didn't even know what she bid.
Well, right now, scrap is real low anyway, so I don't blame it.
I thought you actually got a couple of pieces.
No, what it is, the price of metal, just to go with David's head. It used to be $275 a ton. It's down to like $70, so that's where you're at.
Talking about junk, by the way, my Jeep, my '97 Jeep with the different colored door. Everybody sees me driving around town with that. The Make-A-Wish Foundation is taking it away tomorrow.
Dear tire.
Yeah.
Tears, tears of joy.
And for the record, my wife got the new car, and I got the hand-me-down. So... All right. Any other discussion? David?
That's it.
You all set? All right. You're fine with this? Okay, good. Roll call vote. An... Angelo?
I recuse myself.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. David?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so it passes. Very good. All right, what's next?
Discussion action. Fee waivers for Christmas lighting event, Arctic, sponsored by Council Vice President Giroux.
You've just got to discuss it.
Yeah. Right. What we did for the last week's celebration, we allowed the vendors, the food trucks, to come in because it was to our benefit to get them there. And I'd like to bring it up. We have an event coming up, the Christmas tree lighting here in Arctic. And that is the Monday after Thanksgiving, by the way. Starts at 5:00, I believe.
It's going to start early this year.
It's going to start early this year. Okay, so you might want to check our website, westwallackri.org for that time. Also, I think they usually pass out things at the school to... For the kids. So, what I'm proposing is, I mean, there's one particular vendor that comes all the time. He wants to come all the time, and that's the popcorn guy, I think. But we have other vendors, too. And the problem is that they can't make any money if we, you know, if we charge them that fee. And it's to our benefit and for the benefit of the people that come to this particular event that we have these vendors, and they enjoy it. So what I'm proposing is that... And the ordinance that we passed a few weeks ago allows this. You know, if it's a town event, and this certainly is a town event, we're allowed by ordinance to change it so that they don't have to pay the entry fee, so to speak. They still have to apply. They still have to fill out the proper paperwork, but they don't have to pay the fee. So...
Just that the only thing about that in Arctic that I would put my comments in is, like, you have a few restaurants there. As long as it's not a food truck selling hot dogs or hamburgers who are going to interfere with the businesses that are already there that look forward to this.
They have to be approved.
Yeah.
So anyone who has to clear...
That's the only thing I would say to keep your eye on. Don't take it from the people that are here all year round and trying to make a living and bringing in an outsider to do that. I don't think that's right.
Is Barbara T. back here tonight?
No.
No? Okay. She's the one that runs the event.
I mean, we don't have a popcorn place, but you got Ferruccis, you got...
Oh, no, I agree.
I mean, you know, I'm not going to...
I agree with that.
He's got french fries, he's got sodas, he's got...
This is by invitation that they can come, and we will post a waiver.
And that's why we made the ordinance, almost like we made an enabling, so that we could do it on a case by...
That's my only concern about that.
No, I agree. I don't think they should be directly competing.
Town-sponsored event, town-approved vendors is what it says.
Yeah, sure. Sure. Okay, so is this just discussion? Or do we have a...
Discussion action.
Action.
Got a phone on it.
Okay, yeah. Let me... All those in favor?
Wait a minute.
Whoa, oh, sorry, Dave.
This is the same vendor that I asked you in the summertime to waive the fee for the popcorn guy?
Steve, right. Gilman's.
Yeah. And you didn't waive it?
Yep.
So now, next year, will we be able to waive it for him?
We're coming to our senses, David.
Well, that's a good thing, but we'll be able to waive it for the next year's craft show.
When I had the event person, Barbara, you know, come to me.
Next summer, time before the board.
Yeah, right. Okay.
And, you know, Gilman, he'll complain if he made $100,000 that day.
I don't see a problem at all, because it's a town-sponsored event.
I know him longer than you.
We want to get some vendors there. Sometimes they will not come because they can't make any money. So this way, this is more for the benefit of the people that are enjoying the event than, you know, for them. Okay? All right. So any more discussion? No? Anything from the council? All set? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Ayes, ayes.
Reports. Town managers report.
Just a few items. We did receive four bids for the citizen request management software that I spoke about the last meeting. We did just receive them Friday, so we're in the process of reviewing them. But we'll have a recommendation for you at the next meeting on the 15th on that. In addition, on the 15th, we will also have our new building official. He did start this week, but he's just kind of getting settled in. So I told him we'd have him come on the 15th. He'll formally... You can formally approve him at that point. He'll have a couple of days on the job and be able to speak to you about issues that he sees and, you know, where he wants to go with things. I think he's...
You mean, issues that we see that we want enforced?
Absolutely. That, too.
And I hope they're the same.
And I would want to bring up one issue that I just want to get the council's opinion on, and that is, in the past, we have provided a vehicle for those that have to respond at night for emergency purposes, and they take those home. We have several people in the Fire Marshals and the Fire Department and that go as far as Charlestown. That's been something that we've always done for those that have to respond on a moment's notice at night, snowstorms, doesn't matter. The building official is one of those individuals. However, he does live across the line in Massachusetts. He's actually closer than a lot of the firemen that live in South County. But I just wanted to make sure that the council is okay. I think it's appropriate. Again, he'd only use it for professional reasons. He'd only use it if he gets called in to drive back and forth to work. But it's something that we've done in the past. But because it is out of state, I just wanted to be very clear. It's just CCONC. He's across the line. But you know how that goes. So I just wanted to discuss with the council before I authorize that. I think, again, I think it's appropriate. It's no different than someone else going to, you know, within Rhode Island.
I don't know. You know my feelings on that. The council knows my feelings on that. I think that the home vehicles should stay in town. I gave my opinion on it last time. I'm going to do it again. I think that the vehicles should stay in town. If they have a job, they would drive into work and then drive back, but they would get on a clock. But for them to drive back and forth every day, it's a lot of wear and tear on the cars, the trucks, whatever it is. Just my opinion on it. I don't... I didn't go for it from the Fire Department, the Police Department. I don't go for it with the DPW. I don't go for it with any of it. I think our cars should stay in town.
Again, and the nature of the emergency response is my concern because time is of the essence. So if they have to come into work, get their keys, take another vehicle, in the dead of winter, they might have to clear snow off of it. They might have... And it does happen, so it just...
I understand that.
I don't have a problem, Angelo. I understand what you're saying. You've been very consistent about it.
Yep.
However, if our trust, our insurance company, basically, does not have a problem with it, then I don't. And let's keep in mind that it's not easy to get people to fill these positions.
Correct.
So, you know, we may have not been able to get him if we weren't offering this. As long as it's monitored and as long as the trust does not have a problem with it, I think it's fine. If it's abused, obviously, we have to monitor it. If it's abused, that's one thing. But I think it's very important, and I think we've got a pretty good guy here from what I'm understanding.
Yes.
And this is a little perk, but it is to the benefit of the taxpayer so that he can get here right away and do his work if he has to be called in after...
And ultimately, we, in the past, for those that did not utilize their vehicle, we gave car allowance, which in the end could end up costing us more if you look at what we've done in the past. So I think, you know, the vehicle we're giving him is something that was just retired by the Police Department, and so it's... Costs are fairly minimal.
The amount of driving associated with that job, it seems like it's something that definitely makes sense.
Yeah, that's in town. He's going to be doing the driving.
Yeah.
Inspections, which is understandable where he has a town vehicle to do them inspections. You wouldn't expect him to use his own. I wouldn't use my own. It's town business. But to go back and forth, like I said, that's the reason. I just don't want my reasons twisted.
No, understood.
No.
No, we're not. We get your reasons.
You know, I understand where we use a town vehicle and where we don't use a town vehicle.
Yeah. And if he wasn't required to respond in an emergency, because, and we've had one just a week ago in your war, Angelo, where they ran it to the house. It's a building official's responsibility to go out there when that happens, and usually that happens at 2:00 in the morning. We know when those accidents happen. We've had two or three of them in town in the last year, cars running into buildings. So they've got to get out there right away and deem whether or not people can stay in that building or not. And that's their responsibility, and they're the only ones that can do that. So we need to have that ability for them to respond quickly, so...
I'm okay with it. Okay. Any further discussion? Any...
Okay. I just wanted to clear that. The next item is the... Obviously, you've all heard, the police chief has accepted a position in the town of Westerly. Chief Silva's given me his last day is November 18th, so he's given us three weeks, and I appreciate that extra time. I've already spoken with Major Magara, and he will be stepping in as interim chief while we go through the process of posting the position. We'll set up a committee like has been done in the past. I'd like to meet with the council in an executive session prior to the next meeting just to go over how we might set that up and how we'll move forward with that process, just to make sure everyone's on the same page. By the charter, I will provide a recommendation to the council. The council has final decision on all the director positions. So I'd just like to outline that in executive session, make sure everyone's on the same page with that. Obviously, we'll know who the new council is at that point, too.
Yeah, exactly.
So the council can decide at that point to hold off until the new council is sworn in. But I just wanted to begin that process soon as possible. We can start receiving applications now. We can put the notice out. But in terms of setting up the committee, I will defer to the council and wait. I'll give my recommendation clearly, but I'd like to do that in executive session to make sure we're on the same page.
I mean, you know, after the election, the eight could be the same. It could be different. It could be...
We know there's going to be some difference, so...
There's going to be a difference, and I think that the council that is coming in should be sitting down with you.
So we can wait. If you'd like to wait for the executive session until the first meeting in December, we can do that?
I think it's a waste of time to have an executive session when we don't know if we're going to be here or not.
Well, I think we, last time, didn't we say our...
No, we're waiting for the new council.
The end of the month is when the swearing-in would be...
We can do a swearing-in on the 29th, so that'll make the first meeting in December.
You always have the ability to change that executive session, too, if the election isn't finalized. If there's any disputes regarding any of the races, you can always kick that executive session open or have it on there if it's required.
Sure.
Exercise your right to meet, and if you don't want to, you can always cancel the executive session for the 15th.
But we always wait for the new council to come in before... Unless there was no change.
It's fine to wait. It's not... I mean, as far as the committee piece, it's going to be out there for a few weeks anyway, so I think it's...
And this isn't a situation...
This is more procedural than...
Exactly.
Correct.
No, that makes sense. This isn't a situation like the current situation with the Supreme Court. We have Major Magara serving as acting chief for the interim, so we're fine.
Major Magara's more than capable.
I want him qualified.
It's not like there's a vacant seat.
And on that note, I'm sorry, Councilman?
No, let's at least make the application process...
Absolutely. We are.
...serve on the floor.
Yeah, we're going to... We'll start that process. And I would just like to say, I just want to thank Chief Silva for his 28 and a half years of service and the last five-plus years as chief. I think he's done an incredible job for the town, and it's going to be, you know, tough shoes to fill. But I just do want to, you know, publicly thank him for his service. That's all I have.
Okay. Finance update.
Good evening. Just wanted to mention one thing briefly. We're in the process of sending out notices to delinquent taxpayers as part of the state's tax refund offset program. It's required that we provide notices to any delinquent taxpayers to give them an opportunity to come in to pay before we actually would move forward with providing the information to the State Department of Revenue to actually offset their tax refunds. There's approximately 7,400 notices that are going out for the accounts that are actually would fall within the parameters of the program, and it's about $3 million worth of outstanding amounts. Just to give you some quick numbers, over the last three plus years that we've had the program, we've collected about $300,000, which is about 10% of what this year's numbers are. But again, it's another mean or another avenue to actually collect on some of the delinquent accounts.
Sure.
Between this program and the RFP or bid that was approved a few months back with the collection of delinquent motor vehicle and tangible, we're looking forward to actually ramping up the collection rate, which will ultimately help the budget in many ways. So just wanted to share that with the council.
Thanks, John. Thank you, John. Any questions from the audience on finance? Okay.
Ward reports.
Ward reports. Angelo, let's start with Ward 1.
It's been really good walking every day. You just hear their concerns. Not that I don't hear them anyway, but we have water flushing going on on River Street, and what a mess, I'm telling you. They made River Street a two-way now, not a one-way, just to keep up with the traffic from the malls to Provinna Street, Wakefield Street. Did you find out anything on that Wakefield Street if they were going to smoothen that out before the winter? Dave, did you speak to them?
I called the engineer, and he's going to set up a meeting with the contractor.
Is that Jeremiah?
Yeah.
And we're going to do this before...
Yeah.
I'll tell you. When are we going to stop the paving? After Thanksgiving? They've still got the middle, or is the weather still holding up?
Yeah. Dave, you got to come up to the microphone, because we can't... They can't catch it at home. You're too far back there. I think we should get a wireless mic so that, you know, when Dave wants to sit in the back, we can just give him a mic.
He'll doggy run back.
Right. We'll all chip in.
We got, I think it's, what is it, four roads still open for...
Five.
Five roads open. Once those roads are closed, that's going to be it for this year.
They're going to put the top base on it.
Oh, yeah. They're going to be finished.
And all that.
Finished roads, yeah. Yeah. We already fixed the drainage on Clyde. That's all set. The problem, you know what it was? They put a sewer line right through the drainage ditch.
That poor guy kept getting flooded so bad, and we kept saying...
There's nothing in there.
There's nothing. There's nothing there. Then we thought... That poor guy kept getting flooded so bad, and, and we kept saying, there's nothing, there's nothing there, and so then we thought...
That's what it was. The sewer line runs right through there, so the water would flow in, and it would have to wait till it rose this high to go over the sewer pipe, and then down and up. So we fixed it, we put a pipe underneath it, so it'll take care of that, so you'll be happy. You won't get that call anymore.
Beautiful, thank you. Um, yeah, and I got to say, you know, our DPW, even though, you know, I'm getting accused of hating our employees, but I got to tell you, whether I hate you or not...
I'm not saying it's not true.
You guys are doing, nah, I mean, they're going to, people can say whatever they want to say. You guys did a great job. Every time I call there, and I'm going to, I'm going to say it again, that Dave and, and Freddie and everybody, the workers, they're doing a hell of a job. They're, they're, they're taking care of it, and like I said, and we all agree, 95% of our calls from our constituents is for DPW. And I don't know how they get all the, uh, things done that they do, but you got a good crew, and, um, I thank each and every one of you personally. Uh, that's all I have with Ward 1.
Very good. Uh, Dave, Ward 4?
Uh, we have some roads currently open in Ward 4. Uh, they just recently got that first layer down Ontario Street and Pennell, which is a good thing. I would imagine that top coat's going to be coming in the near future. Um, but aside from that, things have, uh, been going pretty smoothly in Ward 4. No issues, so.
Very good. Brian, Ward 5?
Uh, the only issue I've had since our last meeting was, uh, complaint of speeders on Coolus and Lonsdale from a couple of residents. I informed Major Knott. He, thank him for, uh, getting the speed sign out the next day, collecting data. I asked to have it put before the traffic safety committee, see if additional signage was needed or any other recommendations they may have.
Thank you. And Ward 3, I, like everyone else, I'm, you know, walking the neighborhoods, uh, I see some issues. Uh, I want to meet with the minimum housing inspector as soon as possible. There's certain pockets that obviously, uh, I don't think the town's been doing a good job. Uh, and, uh, we need to, uh, take some rides and, and look around, uh, talking about Ward 3 right now, certain pockets that, that need to be cleaned up. Uh, we've, uh, for the last year, we have, uh, beefed up our ordinances so that we can move quickly, uh, and, uh, I hope that we can, uh, beef them up even more, and I think we can. So, uh, other than that, I want to, uh, thank, uh, a few people. Uh, we did on the Phase 1 of the Factory Street Park. We did that on Saturday. Uh, it's great. I think, uh, in the spring, we're going to start on the playground, and then maybe even, uh, the third phase of the splash pad. Uh, I want to thank Victor Arias from Thunder Mist, who, who put together the orchard, and Roby, who was the master planner. Be the Change was there. Also, Jay Messier, thank you so much for helping getting the volunteers, some volunteers there. I appreciate it. It looks great. It was a lot of work. My back is still hurting from it.
Ward 1 appreciates it, looking nice there.
That's okay, no problem. No problem at all. So, uh, we're going to have, uh, we're going to have a great time, hopefully, in, in the spring and, uh, start on the, the playground with the $100,000 grant that we got and the $50,000, so we have about $150,000. And maybe we can get some corporations out there to chip in too, so we can, uh, expand the, the plans a little bit. That's it.
Can I just, I just forgot one thing.
Yeah, go ahead, sure.
Um, Dave and Fred, uh, the manors, um, Manor 1 and Manor 2 on Wakefield Street. On Sundays, and Chief, Sundays for going to church, they're blowing by the crosswalks over there. Dave, is, is there some kind of a sign we could put there, stop for pedestrians? I mean, it'll make the elderly feel a little more secured. I mean, we spent a ton of money on signage over there, uh, the arrows. We don't have the, the little, um, uh, what do you call them? The traffic stoppers, whatever I call them. Them are ripped out. And the reason why I heard they're getting ripped out is because the fire trucks can't make that turn. And when they make the turn to go into the manor, they take out, that slowed down the traffic a lot. But I'm getting a lot of complaints on a Sunday afternoon, especially for church, when they're trying to cross that crosswalks. They're flying by, they were, they're taking their, their life in their hands. Is there something we can put, you must stop for pedestrians? I mean, it's a law. We all know it's a law. You have to stop in the crosswalks, but they're not doing it. Something to catch there. Can we get that done sooner than later, Dave? I, I appreciate it. And Chief, if, you know, if you've got a patrolman there on Sundays and he sees they're getting out of church or going to church, you know, let them see the police presence there, maybe slow down some of these guys. I appreciate it. That's all, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Upcoming appointments?
Oh, let me ask you, I'm sorry, uh, Mary Ann, let me just ask you, are these correct? Are these all correct, the Development Commission, seven openings for your term?
Yeah, we never, we just left it. We just left it because we never... We just left it on the app.
Yeah, so just read the ones that are, yeah, correct.
Juvenile hearing board with a term to expire 12/2018, and one to expire 12/2016. Recreation board member, one, Ward 3. Planning board, one, five-year term. Zoning board of review, one, five-year term. Technology committee, one, Ward 1 with a term to expire, expire 12/5/16. One, Ward 2 with a term to expire 12/31/16. One, Ward 3 with a term to expire 12/31/16, and one, Ward 5 with a term to expire 12/31/18.
Excellent, thank you.
Public comment?
Public comment? Any questions, any thoughts, anything that you want to say? No? Okay. Gentlemen, any final comments?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn, thank you very much, everyone be safe.
Wow, that was great.